Seven pines.
Good morning, everyone. It's 9:00 a.m. I'd like to welcome everybody to the work session for July the 6th of 2020. Under the public comments section, we have Terry Richardson with Athens Main Street. Mind stepping up the microphone, Terry?
Thank you so much for the past support of Athens Main Street. I want to be respectful of your time and be sure to finish my thoughts, so please excuse me while I read this. The cover letter that you're going to get in your packets is chronological and goes into great detail on the mission-critical activities we focused on in the latter part of 2019 and 2020. Of course, I'm extremely proud of those things. However, I felt like it's appropriate to start with the here and now. I have to be honest, when the crisis hit, I was angry. I was angry because we were seeing so much success downtown and the momentum was great. We were close to 100% capacity. Our merchants were doing well, their sales were strong, they were improving their building. People were actually seriously frustrated that they couldn't find spaces to lease or purchase downtown. And I'll be frank, when this crisis hit, some of our Main Street directors and their boards just disappeared. They took it to the House. We did not. We came out swinging, and here's what we did. Our primary objective over the past four months has been to keep our downtown small businesses afloat. As soon as the first wave of the reopening was announced, we worked to get dedicated parking places and purchased curbside pickup signage for our restaurants and our merchants. We had those up the next day. We were also the first to provide the latest state guidelines and interpretations to our merchants as they were announced to help them understand what was required of them. We assisted in getting information to our district on available grants, loans, and aid. As the shutdown gradually lifted a second time, we realized that designating an entertainment district downtown needed to be a priority, and it would be another tool in the tool belt of helping our businesses attract more patrons to the courthouse square. I researched other Alabama cities' entertainment districts, worked to assist the ordinance language, laid out the boundaries, and gained unanimous support for the opening of the Square Arts and Entertainment District on June 19th. We saw that expanding the outdoor footprint of our restaurants would be key to their ability to attract customers back to the establishments. I worked to double the amount of outdoor dining space by configuring sidewalk dining. We're extremely grateful to the County Commission for allowing us to place additional tables on the courthouse lawn. This has been extremely popular. Additionally, the reconfiguration and improvements to the farmer's market have proven to be essential in attracting patrons back to the market. Through all the phases of the shutdown and the reopening, our social media has been key to getting information to our businesses' patrons. I hope you will see from the current crisis that we're agile and we're able to pivot to react to what's important. It has no doubt been a challenging four months and will continue to be as we navigate the fluid situation that continues to affect our small businesses. We need your help to continue our efforts. On behalf of our organization, I respectfully request that the Limestone County Commission continue to fund our allocation at the current level of $10,000 a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Sandy.
Hey, are those tables permanent on the courthouse?
I'd like to talk to you guys about that.
Okay.
Well, just holler at us sometime about it.
I'm sorry. They're loaned to us from the Black...
City schools.
City schools, okay.
And I think they're still supposed to start back.
Here, I'll give it to you.
They're supposed to come and pick those up around...
Where were they originally?
In front of the, you know where the old library is?
Uh huh.
It's one of the...
Renaissance.
Renaissance.
That's where they were.
Thank you, Terry. Adam Faust, he's not here.
I haven't seen him yet.
Haven't seen Adam. Do we have any more, Pam?
Yes, sir. Mr. Dylan Evans.
Mr. Evans, if you don't mind, step right up here to the microphone, please, sir.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I hope y'all had a good holiday weekend. My name's Dylan Evans. I'm with J.J. Kane Auctioneers. Thank y'all for having me. A little bit more about myself before I get into everything. I live in Birmingham area, graduated from UAB, where I played football for a couple of years back in 2018. Started working for Altech, which is, you know, J.J. Kane is owned by Altech Industries, which, if you're familiar with Altech, makes the bucket trucks, digger dairs, cranes, things like that. But yeah, J.J. Kane, we sell for a lot of electric co-ops, a lot of utility companies across the country. I'm the new rep for Alabama. We've never really had anybody call on any of the municipalities or cities or counties in Alabama, so that's kind of what they hired me for, I suppose. Not exactly how I envisioned my first year to go. Been, you know, working from home for about three or four months, but just last week was my first week back out on the road. So I've talked with Hunter Dowdell a good bit about you guys' current process with auction. So the government exchange folder that you guys have in front of you is our government platform that we have. It's similar to GovDeals, which you guys currently use. It's a timed online platform. Bidders will have a window to bid on equipment. We can set reserves if you need equipment to hit a certain number. But the main difference between us is, you know, we're strictly a fleet, equipment auction. You know, GovDeals, you can list lamps, desks, chairs, miscellaneous items like that. You know, our market of buyers come to us for equipment, strictly equipment. So that's really all that we're looking for. But yeah, you know, talking with Hunter and, you know, really across the board with municipalities, you know, the process for auction usually is a guy in the shop, you know, maybe it's either some mechanics or somebody that has to, you know, get all the pictures, get all the information, you know, post it up on GovDeals. Then, you know, you got customers calling. Maybe they want to come on site and check out the equipment, get it cranked up. With us, we have some things in place to kind of liquidate the process a little bit. So, you know, we have a holding yard in Birmingham. So, you know, when the time comes, you know, ideally, I would move the equipment for you to the holding yard. We would get all the pictures, all the information. Any customer calls would come to me regarding any of the equipment. If anybody wanted to come, kick the tires, crank it up, you know, they would go to the holding yard. So you wouldn't have anybody on your property. You wouldn't be liable for, you know, any accidents that would happen. And another thing that I hear from a lot of municipalities about loadout. So if you've got, you know, 15 or 20 items being sold, you know, that's 15 or 20 separate hauling companies coming on your site at, you know, probably 15 or 20 different times. And, you know, a lot of times, it's Joe Blow's hauling company at, you know, 5:30 on a Friday afternoon when the guys are trying to go home. So once it's out the holding yard, you know, the guys there will help them with loadout. You know, it's just completely out of your hair, basically. And also, in terms of seller's fee, you know, talking with Hunter a little bit, I know GovDeals charges seven and a half percent seller's fee. We start at 3% and we can even charge a 0% as just to try it out type of deal, if you just want to give us a shot. And in terms of moving equipment to the holding yard, it's not something...
We got three minutes.
Okay. Sorry, I just kind of lost my train of thought. Okay, so for transportation, it just gets taken out of the proceeds, so you're not being charged for transportation. So if you moved it to the holding yard, for example, it'd just be like $200 taken out of the results for auction. So if something got brought for $10,000, it's just like a seller's fee, basically, like $200 getting taken out of the proceeds. But yeah, I believe that's all I have. If you guys have any questions or anything, I'd be more than happy to answer.
I got a question. Y'all do buyer's premium seller's fee, right?
We do a seller's fee. We start at 3%, and like I said, it can be negotiable. And we charge the buyers on the backend as well.
Okay.
That's where J.J. Kane really makes the money is through the buyer's premium and seller's fee, but yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pam, do we have any more public comment?
Mr. Greg Skipworth.
Mr. Skipworth, mind stepping up the mic, please, sir.
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you. I got to see the meeting online last month when you had a lot of concern. Citizens come forward and talk for and against the removal of the Confederate statue there by the courthouse. And I wanted to lead off my comments with a quote. "Have we reached the ultimate stage of absurdity where some people are held responsible for things that happened before they were born, while other people are not held responsible for what they themselves are doing today?" And that is from Thomas Sowell, who just recently turned 90. He's an American philosopher. And if we really wanted to fix what's left of racism in our state, I would not argue to remove any statue. I would instead argue that maybe we should have a constitutional convention and redo the 1901 state constitution, which was designed to keep blacks and women out of power. It's probably the longest constitution, I believe, in the world and has been amended over 745 times. And I think that would help us go a long way to fixing whatever is left of the ills that affected us when I was born in 1962. But the world that existed in my birth does not exist anymore. Is there racism? Yes, but it is based on individual people and not on a state-run enterprise like it used to be. So I would articulate that you would not want to remove any statue because what no one said who advocated for that was, how many statues would satisfy them? Would they stop with statues? Would it be plaques? Would they go after books, movies, theaters, churches? You know, if a church was built with former Confederate money, does that make it tainted? You know, these are things to consider. And one last thing I would say is Auschwitz, when it was discovered by the Soviets, you know, people wanted to tear it down, and the Jewish community that had survived said, no, keep it up. We need it to serve as a reminder as to where we were and what could happen when there's an absence of humanity. So I would say, if you really wanted to educate children, then you might build a contextualized plaque system around that monument and let it serve as a reminder of who we were and where we are today because those are two opposite points in time, okay? And the last thing I'll leave you with is a quote. "Every record has been destroyed or falsified. Every book rewritten, every picture has been repainted. Every statue and street building has been renamed. Every date has been altered, and the process is continuing day by day and minute by minute. History has stopped. Nothing exists except an endless presence in which the party is always right." And that was from George Orwell's 1984 because that's where those people want us to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skipworth.
Kay Text, he said Mr. Faust was on his way.
He's right there, Mr. Adam Faust is.
Come on in.
All right, come on in.
Come on up to the microphone, Mr. Faust. Adam.
Well, I guess, first off, thank you for having me. I'm Adam Faust with the Prior Field Airport Authority. Been airport manager about a year now, so I didn't get to come last year to this presentation. So I'm glad I got to come this year and share the happenings with Prior Field and share our requests with you all. This year, we are asking for $40,000. Just going to go over a brief overview of what's been going on at the airport and maybe to some of y'all that have not been out to the airport before, really share what a gem our airport is. In short, we're a 6,000-foot runway. What that means to you all is we can handle large cargo aircraft. That's our niche we're going after right now, especially with Mazda Toyota, Polaris, and then some of the other industries around that do do cargo. We are still handling cargo. We saw a drop-off due to COVID, obviously, but we're about at 60% our operating where we were back in March. So we're coming back slowly but steadily there. We have over 150,000 operations annually. That makes us the number-one busiest airport as far as general aviation goes in the state. So general aviation means anything that is not commercial service. Right now, we have 113-based aircraft. That makes us number two in the state. Number one is Shelby County down in Birmingham. So recent data just came out from the state system plan is Prior Field contributes $5.4 million annually to the local economy, indirect meaning for every $1 spent at Prior Field, $4 goes somewhere else in the community, whether it be restaurants, hotels, rental car companies that use the airport. So just a good number there. Then back in 2005, the last time this was updated, we were at 3.5 million. So you see a steady uptick there as far as our economic impact. 2020, just here in review, we did put in a new self-service system, completed a new lighting program for the airport. We also just completed our taxiway resurfacing. That was a $0.5 million FAA project. And we are 100% hangar capacity, like I said. We also hired a new consulting firm who's come in and redid our capital improvement plan with us. So that's going to really plan for the long term for the airport. Forecasting projects coming up, we are doing a taxiway resealant. That's also been a federal project, about $250,000 project. We are going through a land acquisition of some land adjacent to the airport right now to build some hangars on. We are also going to be doing an apron rehabilitation of the main terminal building, and we hope to build some hangars this year. The airport's not built hangars in about 20 years, and our waitlist is getting quite extensive. So waitlisting anything from a Cessna 172, single-engine, some larger cabin cruiser aircraft. So with us being the cheaper option than Huntsville International, we try to bring those folks in. Your third page there is actually our new capital improvement plan. That's done with our consultant, Good Mills in Kwood. They do have an office locally. So you see everything there kind of crosshatched and colored, color codes to our projects. Like, the area in blue is what will be going on this year. We hope to build some hangars as well and then some apron rehabilitation, just some old World War II-era concrete that needs some desperate TLC. So try to talk fast for this three minutes.
Who owns the property there where you're wanting to get to expand?
The five acres is owned currently by the Calhoun Community College.
Okay, that's where I was thinking.
Yes, sir.
The old FBO, what's its status?
It's currently standing. As you might know, the authority board did vote to move forward with a plan to tear down that old lean-to structure, the terminal building, but maintain and renovate the original hangar structure, yes, sir. The terminal building, our consultant came in and gave us an architectural assessment of it, and the estimate to renovate that building was over $1.2 million. So it was a large chunk of change.
Yeah, it changed. It's changed a whole lot since I flew out of there.
Please come back out and visit. Happy to give you another tour or show off the airport a little bit.
What's the largest aircraft that y'all can land on that?
We've had 737s do freight. The problem is with them, they come in heavy and they usually leave light just because safety reasons. But we get 73s, we've got DC9s. Our current biggest base aircraft is a Cessna Citation XL. So carries about, I think, eight people, and it's owned by a local company. So we do have about four or five base jet tenants right now, so hopefully growing.
Thank you, Adam. Anybody have any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you. Ma'am, do we have any more?
I don't have anyone signed in.
Okay, don't.
And she?
That lady is...
Yeah. Well, you had to post a bit. We're supposed to sign in by nine o'clock, but being as we're still in the public comment...
You don't have to sign in. Thank you.
Y'all let it go.
Sign in right here.
Just come right here and sign in, ma'am. Being as we're right here at the end, we'll let you go ahead and go. It's got three minutes to get up here and do your comment. Just come right here and sign in with this lady right here. For future reference, we're supposed to be signed in by nine o'clock, but just sign in. Just put your name and your address right there, and then we'll get away with it.
I can just tell you the address. I'll write it for you.
Lord, we got a Bible today, don't we?
You can go ahead and make comments.
Yeah, come on up. What's your name?
Marbelene Wayland.
Wayland?
Wayland.
Yes, Wayland. Just come right to the microphone, Miss Wayland.
It's Wayland. Oh, Malone. It looks like a gub, yeah. Okay, Malone.
Marbelene Malone, okay.
Yes, sorry.
What I'm here for this morning, well, good morning to you all.
Good morning.
I own property at 1503 Sixth Maple Tree Way in Athens, and I received a letter last week stating that New York subdivision wants to come through. This letter came from Mr. Massey, Mark Massey. Is he here? Okay. My concern is I just want to make sure my property was not going to get taken away.
As we spoke on the phone, they can't take any property, the road right of way, sorry, the road of the Maple Tree Way. That is, it's a private road, so it's only for access of adjacent property owners, and they're not adding to or taking any of that. And so all the current property owners should have access, the same access they've had this entire time. But I know we had talked about that you were going to reach out to the surveyor about...
I did, but he, right now, he's too busy.
The back property line that you were concerned about because that was really more of a property line matter than it was a matter of whether or not the subdivision meets our subdivision regulations. So, but as I told you, the surveyor cannot just go in and take property because they move a property pin. They have to have justification for where those property pins are based on legal descriptions, and they're supposed to do all that research, and they're held liable for that research. So I do encourage you to reach out. I will reach out to him as well and tell him he needs to return your call.
I did reach out, and he did return a call, but right now, he says he's too busy to meet with me, so I'll be patient and wait till his schedule get okay.
I will tell him he needs to make some time.
I will give him another call. Just give him a time because of the holiday weekend, you know. So I'll give him another week or whatnot and give him another call.
All right. I'll make sure that y'all, that you have a conversation with him before I'm in a position to sign the plaque. Because they have to wait for my signature before they can record it. So I'll make sure that he has crossed all of his Ts and dotted all of his Is as far as you're concerned.
Is that property right there where Evans and York?
It's Evans and York.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. This property, this property has a little bit of road frontage kind of on both of those properties, and he's essentially dividing the square that he owns in the back in two. And so, I mean, he meets the subdivision regulations, but she had some concerns about her property lines where they had some things, Mark.
Yeah. I don't live there, but I still want and love my property because my daddy bought it for me when I was a little girl, so it's still interesting, and I would just...
I thought that's where that was.
Like I said, I will encourage him to have reached back out to you.
He did, but like I say, he's too busy right now.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming. You're welcome to go ahead and leave, or you can stay either one. It doesn't matter. Thank you, Ms. Malone. So I guess we're through with the public comment then. All right, we'll move on to resolutions and orders. First on here would be to approve or resolution authorizing Community Consultant Incorporated to provide a grant application, preparation, and administrative services on a federal grant project, and that will be Terry Acuff.
Yes, that's his company.
He is not here yet. He will be here at the next meeting.
He'll be here at 10:00.
He'll be here at 10:00. Does anybody have any comment with that? That's on the Dupree's.
That's, yeah, we want to do that.
Okay. All righty. Any more discussion with that? All right, next thing on here would be to approve resolution to provide Tier One benefits to Tier Two plan members. Any discussion with this?
Yeah, I would, you know, we've got, this is five more meetings before the deadline on this one. I would like to do a little bit more research on this, kind of get the history. And this was done back in 2012 and took effect 2013. And I would like to see what has changed in people's thinking of going back to Tier One and, you know, what has changed, what economic changes has made it to where we want to do this. So I would ask that we lay this on the table. I'll ask for that in the meeting, and y'all can determine that, at least to do this at the next meeting in two weeks, and give me a little bit more time.
We can take it off now. If y'all want to leave it on there, what do y'all want to do?
You can decide.
Anybody else have any comments?
And two, in the letter, I don't know if the letter y'all got from R.C., A.R.S.E.A., that association, she volunteered to have Evans Brown come at our work session and make a presentation, and I would suggest that we do that, you know, to allow them to make their presentation. So that's my thinking. And it'd give us time to get some feedback from employees, too.
Well, I bet you we don't have any employees that are going to not want to go to Tier One.
Well, sure. I mean, but that's true.
Yeah, I've got three employees that are Tier Two right now, and they were just, they were very happy with Tier One going to Tier One. The percentage rate, I think, that they would have to give in substantially is more than what we already have Tier One people doing. So they're going to be putting some skin in the game to be able to reach that.
It'll be raised.
Yeah.
That would be raised to Tier One.
Yeah, to be raised up.
Which is, you know...
The reason, I'm the one who put it on there, so we discussed it. And one of the things I looked at was, and this is for y'all's information, we can talk about here, is, you know, if we don't go back to the Tier One benefit in the future, what you'll run into is, is you'll run into some employees that work here 40 years, you know, if they start here young. And then, you know, the benefit, you know, it could cause, I'm looking at the long-term savings in the long run, you know, because if you go back to Tier One, they can retire at 25. But if you go to the tier, if you stay with the Tier Two, you've got to be, what is it, 60 or 62?
62 years.
62, you know, if somebody is 20 years old or 22, you know, they've got to stay here 40 years, and the cost could be significant down the road, you know. It was, that was why I looked into it like that. I mean, that's...
What the cost of...
Of, like, your employment. I mean, you take like, you know, naturally, if you had an employee been working here 40 years, his salary would be a whole lot more than a guy that'd been working here 10 years. And, you know, for the long-term haul of it, you know, in the future, it could be, you know, it was sort of like, you know, if you had a foreman that had retired, what, last year?
Yeah.
And he wouldn't have been eligible to retire on the Tier Two program because he would have had to been 62 or...
62.
You know, or had to have, you know...
He had to work two more years.
He'd had to work two or three more years, and I mean, you know, with your budget, you just see how much difference that makes in employee... That's all, that's one reason I was looking at it for the future of the, and plus retaining employees, you know. I mean, you know, it's naturally, you know, that was one of the main benefits the state had for years was employee retention, you know, because you had the 25-year program versus the longer, and that was... And like I said, well, I just know we have to do it either. We had to do it before September 1st, and, you know, we wouldn't have the three more meetings after this one to get it approved. And that was, I just put it on there for the conversation. I mean, it's up to...
Yeah, we've got, I mean, we can do it next meeting. I mean, that's the thing. I would like to check with Sunny.
It can actually go to next year.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can. But it was just what I was looking at, you know, we're hiring, and we can actually, but we can put it off the next meeting. It doesn't matter to me, but...
What'd you say, Pam? Do it next year? I thought this was a window. This was a...
It can, it has to be done this year by a certain time to be for this fiscal year or it's got to be to them by, I don't know the date, May something, at the very last, or you miss the whole window.
And I'm not saying, hey, I'm only asking for one meeting.
I don't, I mean, but what I was looking at, you know, and just for the future here, you know, we're hiring 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. We're hiring 8 or 9 today on Tier Two, you know, and if we go back to this program, they're already on, you know, we don't have to catch them, you don't have to catch that all back up. But I don't mind putting it on to the next meeting. Y'all just put it off to the next meeting.
That's fine.
That's fine with me. It's fine with y'all. I mean, I would just put it on there for conversation. You know, to get us all together in a work session. Anybody else have any comment with it?
Well, the only thing that I was going to say is I lost one employee that was a good employee because he was that 19-year-old boy that was going to have to work all those years. And the thing that we already have is, as we're seeing with the growth that we have, you've got, say, reconstruction in some of these other places are being able to start someone off at $16, $17 an hour, and we're having to start some people off as operator ones at $12.
$10, $11, $90 something, yeah.
So the incentive is, hey, you know, we can't pay you that extra $5 an hour, but here's what we can offer. So that's, and I know all the commissioners feel the same way. We'll never be able to reach the private industry salary schedule, but the one thing, the reason that Jason Black is still in the state retirement system is not because of the amount of money that I make, it was because of the benefits. And when my grandparents and my parents told me, they said, hey, you know, you can make a lot of money someday, or, you know, you can serve the public and you can work for 25 years, you can have good insurance, you can have good benefits. And that's one of the reasons that I'm still doing what I'm doing now. So I know that's the same thing that Ben wants to talk about, too. So, but I think it's good, and putting it off for another, to the next meeting, that's fine with me.
I don't have a problem with putting it off. I just wanted to put it on there for conversation, you know. And like I said, you know, well, it's Steve's, that's the only one on the employee hire here, like Ethan and Wilson out in District 2. You know, Ethan's what, about 23 or 24 years old, you know, and he's been out there for a year or so. And, you know, if he works out there 40 years, you know, that's going to be, that'd be, you know, as far as the budget, 40 years down the road, that would be majorly devastating, you know, because he'll be a topped-out employee versus where we could replace him in 20 years or 20... because he'll be a topped-out employee versus where we could replace him in twenty years or more years or so with an operator one again and start over. I'm just looking at the future of it as far as the, and plus, you know, even the education sector is seeing this. And, you know, they're having trouble retaining or keeping teachers because of the benefit packages. Well, if y'all
I mean, the Jason thing, you can go out and work for Reed, start for twenty-two dollars an hour.
Yeah.
So I know there's competitive wage pressures.
Do y'all want to still put it off to the next, you want to put it off to the next? Okay. Well, let's strike that off and we'll put it on next agenda then, Pam. Let's take it off of this next agenda. We'll take it off the commission meeting. If everybody, everybody's fine with that? Okay. I'm fine with it. It doesn't matter. All right, so we're striking it off. All right, next thing on the contracts, agreements, and grants. Approved charter communications right to, right of entry agreement with the location of Sorrel Dental. And that's just where they can go in there and work. Does anybody have any conversation with that? All right, no conversation with that. The next thing over here would be to approve the following Senior Community Service Employment Program Host Agreement Agency with TARCOG, which will be for the Alabama Department of Senior Services and the Senior Services of American Incorporated. Any discussion with that? All right, no discussion with that. We'll move on here. We have the approved detailed information cooperative agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for a federal highway administrative grant in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars to be applied toward. And this is twenty twenty photography and mapping project of the ALDA at ten thousand for their part in twenty-five hundred county. This is out there on
This is revenue of Ryan Patterson's office for the digital photography.
It's updated aerial imagery.
Aerial imagery, okay.
When's the last time it was updated? It's been about three or four years ago.
It's old.
Yeah. Especially on the, especially on the east side of the county.
Twenty sixteen.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe we could get hooked up with the airport.
Yeah, we could get an airplane after we fly over.
Airplane and do our own pictures.
All right, moving on. Any more discussion with that?
I'll do the flight.
We got a pilot, yeah.
Yeah, we got a pilot. Don't know if we trust him or not, but we got one. We're moving on. Approved memorandum of understanding with the city of Athens concerning municipal elections. This is for the city election where they, Bobby and them can help with that. Anybody got any conversation with that? All right, no more conversation with that. Number five, be approved MOA with the city of Madison for the resurfacing of Hardeman Road and Burgreen Road. This is out in Steve's district. A lot, some of this has to do with a little bit of money we had left over last year. Steve, you got anything with it?
Now, Hardeman Road's in Jason's district.
Uh, Jason's.
In my district. Uh, no.
Is that the Burgreen Road portion of my district or?
Well, it's both of them. What it is, is they're essentially going to pay to resurface and manage the project for Hardeman. And then we'll do the same thing for Burgreen when we get to Burgreen Road. They won't be involved in it really, but they're not. But this agreement, I think, states that neither one of us give up our maintenance responsibilities. It's just for the purpose of this one project. They can use our paving contractor and manage Hardeman, then we can manage Burgreen. And, but neither one of them are giving up our maintenance responsibilities.
Yep. Well, I'm sorry, but I need the Hardeman Road part, but I need the Burg, but that is the part that we are redoing on the
That would be what this is about.
Now, Madison took over part of Burgreen, right?
Yeah, that's what this is saying is that they're, anything that is currently their maintenance responsibility will remain their maintenance responsibility. And so that's not saying that we're taking any maintenance responsibility. Okay.
Any more discussion with that? All right, next thing on here would be to approve agreement with Morrell Engineering Incorporated to provide construction engineering and inspection services on Shaw Road resurfacing projects. Jackson, you got anything with that?
Looking forward to it getting done. There's a lot of traffic on Shaw Road. Terry knows, she lives out there and uses it a lot. And the one good thing we have about it, there's not a lot of heavy equipment on it. But the traffic is continuous at least three times a day. It's just, it's horrendous. So it's coming apart like every other road that I've seemed to have and the rest of y'all have, too. But this is one that's going to a nuclear power plant. So we need to make sure we have this set up to where it's safe. And in case of evacuation, it needs to be where we can get people in and out of there. So that's, that's good.
And this agreement is for the construction engineering and inspection. So they're overseeing the federal aid project. And so just with the workload that we have with everything else that's going on, having personnel to sit there and oversee that is just not possible. And this is an opportunity the federal aid project will pay for, will reimburse us for Morrell's, for this agreement.
It's a hundred percent, too.
So, yeah, I mean, there's, so like I said, we'll have to, I mean, that's, so like I said, this is a reimbursement of that. So we'll be reimbursed by that. So like I said, this is just an opportunity to where I didn't, I didn't get another ball up in the air to possibly drop.
Have Hunter out there or you out there or somebody like that. We can have somebody else.
Yeah, they're going to handle, they'll handle the inspection and we'll work with them, but they'll handle the inspection and the paperwork kind of thing. The, and this is a federal aid, this is a federal aid. Is this under the new four hundred thousand? No, this is, this is, this is, this is the leftover from the previous federal aid. This will finish the federal aid program as we knew it.
Good.
Any more discussion with that? All right, we have no budget of agents and no merchant purchases. Board appointments. We'll appoint Valerie Hendricks to the Healthcare Authority of the Limestone County effective July the sixth of twenty twenty through December the thirty-first of twenty twenty. That was, somebody had resigned from the board, right?
Ernest Campbell.
Mr. Campbell, I thought that was right. And then second thing on here, I'll just read it off, too, would be reappoint Camilla Gaston and Valerie Hendricks to the Healthcare Authority of Athens, Limestone County effective January the first of twenty twenty-one. That'd just be reappointing. Anybody got any discussion with either one of those board appointments? All right, no discussion with either one of those. Ward of bids, it'll be the ward gas bid, thirty cent over margin rack with WH Thomas. Any discussion with that? All right, and personnel action, I'll just go through them. We'll hire Clayton Pugh as a corrections officer pending a drug screening. Then we'll hire Jesse Gibson as a deputy pending a drug screening. Hire Jason Williamson as a deputy pending a drug screening. Hire Rodney Elkins as a litter patrol in District Four pending a drug screening. Hire Alicia Luder in revenue, recording clerk over in probate office. Promote Ethan Wilson, operator two out in District Two. Hire Buford Clemmons as a part-time litter driver in District Two. And approve to oh, approve a transitional administrator to the, let me, does anybody have any question with either one of those right there on the, we'll stop right there for a minute. Number seven. Anybody got any discussion with anybody on the hiring there or promotion or anything? All right. And number eight here will be to approve to add a transitional administrator to the staffing plan for the county commission office through December the thirty-first of twenty twenty. As everybody knows, Pam says she's leaving at the end of the year. And this will be just to put somebody with her to work for a few months, just to add to the staffing plan because whoever takes that position is going to have a big shoe to fill, even from a small-footed lady. So anyways, going to have a major, major shoe to fill. It's going to be a, so I just, we just want to put somebody with her. And anybody got any discussion with that?
When you wanting to hire this person?
Well, we just got to get it, probably the end of the month, maybe, first of next month or something.
As soon as you can.
We'll have to advertise and all that, so. We figured, we just need, we got to amend the staffing plan, you know, to add that position. Then we'll have to advertise and hire, probably the first of next month or something like, maybe sometime next month. I'd like for, I'd love for whoever wants to be in with her six months, but we're done past that threshold, so. But anybody got any discussion with that? All right, no discussion with that. We'll move on to number nine here, to be approved family medical leave for Jason Pendigras, Ben Ginnings, July the sixth of twenty twenty until August the seventeenth of twenty twenty. Any discussion with that? All right, and I'm not going to go through, read all off the merit increases, but does anybody have any conflict with anybody on the merit increase? I take that as a no. All right, and the engineers report, Mr. Massey?
Yes, we, first, the first item would be for amending, would be for amending midpoint business park subdivision. This was a major subdivision that was granted preliminary approval May eighteenth. In that subdivision, there were three lots. This was in District Two off of Highway seventy-two west of Mooresville Road. They've come back and they said that, that they kind of made this a little bit of a smaller subdivision because they were concerned about the current economic situation. But since then, they've decided that they're going to proceed. And so they want to add fourteen lots and the subsequent roadway to that. And so this is going to be a commercial subdivision. So they're selling these as commercial lots. So they just wanted to go ahead and do that all at once. So it, just to kind of make it easier, we felt like we needed to amend the preliminary approval to encompass the entire seventeen lots and roadways associated with it. That way we could process it on our side as one subdivision instead of multiple subdivisions that are just taking place concurrently. And then the other item would be three new subdivisions. They're all minors for preliminary and final. Messer Place subdivision, two lots in District Four on Lydia Corey Road. York Acres subdivision, which the lady was in here about, two lots in District Three, kind of at the corner of Evans and York Lane Intersections. And Gatlin Acres, two lots in District Three northwest of Cedar Acres Drive and Long Meadow Road intersection.
Anybody got any questions for Mark?
And then just to kind of give you, kind of fill you in on where the paving crew is, we've gone back to the paving schedule, the district paved for paving schedule, the local paving schedule. We finished up the chip seal for everything that Reed Contracting is doing. So we're going back to our list. I think we're in District Four. It'll probably be till the middle of next week or so, weather permitting, we'll be working in District Four. Then I think we will go, I think the next on the list is to come back to District Two. You've got three roads on there. So probably middle of next week, first of the following week, we'll be ready to move to you to do those three roads. And we're working through all of the projects. I think we've, I've talked with Emily quite a bit because of the current economic situation. There is some concern about making sure that everybody has the funding to complete what we had ambitiously chosen to do. And, but, so I'm going to continue to work with her and keep you guys up to date if we start getting down to the wire on the money that's available. So I'll just kind of keep you in the loop. But we're not, our goal is not to slow down and just in case the money does, does hold out and it does pick back up and come back in like we had originally budgeted. But I'll just keep you guys up to date as we go if we start running into any, any financial constraints with being able to complete that list. The rebuild, all the rebuild Alabama? Well, everything except for Jason's projects, which Shaw Road, the chip seal on Shaw Road is one of the rebuild Alabama. But we're waiting until the federal aid contractor gets, begins theirs before we move in. We don't want to leave the chip seal out there for any extended period of time. But, and then he's got another couple of, another couple of roads that will need the chip seal. So we
We got Snake.
Snake and that other smaller one. Warren. We have those. So, but that will finish, all we have left is just that little bit of chip seal for rebuild Alabama. And then spoke with Reed Contracting today. They should finish up Bethel Road in the next couple of days. And they, there is the possibility still that they'll have to move out to do some work on a, do some work on an airport. But they said they wouldn't leave a project unfinished. It might be a move out in between projects. So, but like I said, they, they had probably a thousand feet paved this morning by about eight o'clock on Bethel Road. So, so like I said, they came in this morning wide open. So they should, in the next two to three days, finish Bethel. And then there is the possibility that they will have to pull off for a few days to go do another contract that's kind of been hanging out there. But we are, I'll keep everybody kind of up to date on that, especially Darryl and Ben, as I know more information, so. But that's kind of where we are.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody got anything else from Mark? All right, next thing on here, another business will approve for the master gardeners to use the farmer's market to hold their monthly meeting through December of twenty twenty. And what this is about is they have been holding their meetings inside and with a social distancing. They were looking for an outside area and they were just wanting to use it for their monthly farmer, for their national garden meeting. And I know they do so much work down there keeping it beautified and all. I don't have an issue with it at all. Anybody else got anything with it? All right, and the next thing on here will be to remove the following from inventory, which is just desk and stuff, engineering, reappraisal on the sheriff's office and things like that. Anybody got anything with any of those items? All right, then, but to be moved, and then the third thing on here would be to approve to transfer the following from appraisal to councilman agent, which is a twenty-eleven Dodge Nitro. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right, then, next thing will be our schedule for our public hearing on the community development block grant, which will be Mr. Acuff, and he'll be here at ten o'clock to talk with that. So at this time, reports officer, Commissioner Sammett?
I don't have anything at this time, Ms. Chairman.
Commissioner Turner?
Yeah, I just want to flip back to the merit raises. I think it's probably just a typo, but Chris Shit is actually an operator three. I think it's
It's probably just a typo.
I figure it's just a typo. Reconstruction, great job on Copeland, Capshaw, Sanderson. Done it about as timely as I think that me or Darryl could have expected and done a great job. Looks good. So we're bush hogging. It's a slow go. You know, we bush hog the days it ain't raining or until it starts raining and then we stop. And we've been cleaning a few ditches, just normal maintenance.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Commissioner Black?
I don't have anything.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Commissioner Harrison? And I'll just hold mine till the next meeting and thank all y'all for being here today. Thanks, everybody, for coming. And we'll see everybody in twelve minutes at ten o'clock.